Start with Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Stacy, if you could read a vision and mission statement, please.
Our vision statement is an educated community of higher character. In our mission statement, the mission of the Southwestern schools is to provide all students an equal opportunity for exceptional success within a safe and secure learning environment.
Thank you. And next will be audience calls. Everyone in the audience would like to speak on any agenda item? I have a letter to read, see? Okay. When it gets to the subject, you can read it. Does that sound good? Can you get the light, everyone? Perfect, thanks. Next will be Band Parents Association.
To the Southwestern School Board, as you know, quite a few of us band parents came to a board meeting last summer to discuss the neglect and discouraging support for our program and our children. Our kids in marching bands still do not have adequate rehearsal space. While all of the sports teams are taken care of very well, the arts still suffer. Quite frankly, our kids deserve better. Arts programs like music classes and marching band are very important in human development. There are multiple studies that have proven that music unlocks parts of the human brain that would otherwise remain dormant. I mean, just the ability to read sheet music is comparable to knowing a second language, boosts mathematical skills, and more. Music is good for our children in more ways than one. Marching band teaches us discipline, sportsmanship, and teamwork, just like any other sport. But without proper support like rehearsal space, we're setting our children up for failure. I mean, look at these kids. They deserve better. So I am asking you to please think about our school's mission statement and ask yourself how we can do better. Thank you for your time, and we look forward to working together with you to find a proper solution.
I would like to add to that as well. When I was hired here, I was basically given the task of growing the band program. I was talked to in my interview, talked to in different meetings with administrators about what can we do to bring the numbers up. Numbers had been down, and we've done just that. So far in the two years that I've been here, the band has grown exponentially. Our beginning band classes are dwarfing numbers at schools in the county. We are having more sixth grade band members come in than other schools in this county. Our marching band has doubled by 200%. Our pep band has got, numbers have gone up by 200%. And basically what is happening is we are, we have no place to rehearse for marching band. The field that is provided to us lacks a bunch of different things that we need to be successful. And what our fear is as an organization is that by continuing to have these rehearsal, this rehearsal facility doesn't really fit our needs and doesn't really fit the activity that we're going to start seeing all of this work that has happened over the last two years kind of, kind of go against each other. You know, we're going to start having kids that are going to leave the program because they don't feel that they're having adequate support from the administration or the school at all with their rehearsal facility. To remind you, the problems that we have with our rehearsal facility are not that we can't use it. We can use it, but to the best of our ability to be successful, it is not worth using it. The sound hookups for our, I guess the electric hookups for our sound equipment are in the back of the field, meaning that we have to run a 200-foot-long extension cord through the middle of our field just to have sound equipment. And if you, I know maybe some of you haven't been involved with marching band before, but sound equipment is very important when it comes to your marching band show. It provides different things for your show, different things for hits and everything like that. So it's a really important part, and we have to run a cord through the middle of the field just to have that available. Right now, our current show, our field would not fit our props because it is not wide enough. A regular football field is 160 feet wide. Our field is 100 feet wide. And so we're missing about a third of the field, a little bit over a third of the field. And then on top of that, that provides, with missing a third of your field, that doesn't provide the students with the, you know, correct ability to see and gauge what their show is going to be like on an actual performance setting because they don't have an actual performance setting to perform on. And then another thing as well along with that is that we have to hand paint the field, which is not a problem. It is time-consuming, but it's not precise. You know, I'm out there with, you know, yard tape and straight lines and trying to make everything level. So it's not a precise field, having to hand paint it yourself. And then as we've seen with our marching band numbers growing up, eventually, if the numbers keep going up the way they're growing, we will outgrow the space. Eventually, as we get to 60, 70 members in the marching band, which as we've seen could be in a couple of years with the numbers, the way the numbers are going up, we will be too big to have a show on that field. So basically what we're asking is just to find a solution. We thought we had one, and then it came forward that we couldn't paint over the lines on the, on the playground. We couldn't paint over the paintings on the playground. And so now, again, here we are a year later, left with no rehearsal facility, just like we were last year. And so we just want to see some different things as well from the board, just some support. How can we fix this solution? Because here we are again with our kids left without a sufficient rehearsal facility for another season, sort of after we thought it had all been sort of worked out last year. And we had made an agreement with a rehearsal facility in mind. So just anything, I have a solution that I can present to you. It's sort of along the lines of what we talked about last year, but I'd like to see where you guys come and what ideas you have. I'm here for any questions. I'll be here for the whole discussion, so anything you need. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I speak?
Sure. As a former band parent, I appreciate what Mr. Branstad has done with our band. And I know how great that program provides for our kids. My kids have done very well for themselves in getting their educations, and the band was a big part of that. I don't know if you've, if you haven't been a part of it, you, there's a lot of work that goes in. I don't know how the kids do it. It always amazed me how they could stay on tune and, and know where their place is to march to. And it's important that those hash marks are there where they need to be. Plus, the band is timed. From the time they come out of the end zone to step in the field and set up, and without a full football field area to practice that in, it makes it difficult for them to get out there and get set up and perform. And I, I think we need to do something for our band and for Mr. Branstad and the great job he's doing to support these kids.
Thank you.
Can I add one more thing to the band parent comments? My name is Jess. I am actually Jocelyn's mom. She's a member of the band. And just wanted to say really quickly that they do get very discouraged by going to, when we go to other rehearsal spaces or we see competitions, other things, and they're like, wow, gosh, look at this. And then they don't even have an adequate space to, to practice in or to rehearse in. So it can be very, you know, discouraging to the kids. And they do a great job of just plugging through and, you know, getting through it all and everything, but they do go to, and granted, I mean, our school's not Floyd Central. It's never going to be, you know, those kinds of things. They have a lot of money. But when they see just even a sufficient rehearsal space, they're just like, gosh, why don't I have that? You know, why don't, why doesn't my school have that? And then they see things like the basketball team who just gets so much and other activities. My daughter personally is involved in other activities. She has a pool to swim in. She has an archery field target range to shoot in. She has everything she needs except for the band rehearsal space, which is probably one of her most beloved things. And we're just concerned as parents that our kids are going to start to step down from these programs. And not only that, but maybe that even in the future, that Alex would decide to leave or Mr. B would, you know, decide to go to somewhere that would offer him a better opportunity in teaching students. And we don't want to have to see our kids go through another director. Not that he's mentioned that or anything, but that's just a concern that I have personally. And Jocelyn and I have spoke about it. She's like, I don't want to lose Mr. B because he could go somewhere and be a wonderful director and have everything that he needs and then go through yet another director, which would be like, oh, well, we don't know them. We're just going to go with another activity. So that's just kind of what I wanted to put into this conversation as well. Thank you.
I've got something to add as well. Do you remember a couple of years ago, we had to go to your office for Alex because she was having suicidal thoughts? Alex is now the drum major for the band. She's happy. She, she's thriving. She's doing well in school. I mean, I'm sure you've seen her in the hallway, so she's, she's doing good now. Band makes a difference. It takes kids that are dealing with depression and others and not feeling like they belong somewhere, and it gives them somewhere to thrive. She's making memories now, and she's been doing better than she has in years because of band. So for no other reason. We see it in sports. The band needs that support too. The kids in the arts need that support too. So just as a parent that cares, I mean, we need, we need that support.
Thank you.
First of all, I'll speak for the board on the comments by just saying that it's never been our intention to ignore the band or not become support. And if that's the case, because we're a year later, obviously in this process of trying to find a facility, as a board member, I will apologize for that. And I understand if it wasn't for extracurriculars in my life, and not just basketball, but you know, my dad bragged that I got a basketball scholarship and my mom bragged that I got a choir scholarship to overcome, so I could go, right? So I get the arts, I get the, the whole thing. Our thoughts and ideas for the playground, we just did not feel it was right to paint over the areas that are being just permanently painted over the areas that are being used for 500 students that are here in the elementary school when they go out for, for their, their time. And we didn't feel like at the time when we talked about it, that that was the right message to send to the elementary school. We've asked ours superintendent to get with band and talk about things, so I'm going to let Jason talk about that a little bit and just see, you know, where we are as far as coming up with a plan and how we can move forward. But it's not ever our, our goals or our thoughts to not support an entity that's going to help further someone's education and really their ability to, you know, become better in society. So that is absolutely not our intent. We absolutely want to find a facility. Just the other day, we get an email about some other things that haven't been brought to our attention that we would also like to look into, but that's a little further down the road. So I get everything that everyone has said in the room. It's been heard. I want you to know that's not falling on deaf ears, but if you want to speak to a little bit about the situation and how we're trying to move forward.
Yeah, the big thing for me would be to hear the proposal that you might, you might have at this point in time because short of what we've talked about, even the playground doesn't have the width that you require for a band. So I don't know where we have space on our campus. And then I know that there was concerns about how far you would have to go and how to move your stuff, your equipment. So, I mean, I would like to sit down and hear what your proposal is and see what you have, because if you have some idea of where we could do that in an efficient way, that would be great.
Yeah, where we're at with it is, we understood about the elementary. The thing that was so great about the elementary was, one, the secluded space, but then the option that we talked about of if we decided that we needed it to be wider, that there was options to, to add on to the blacktop. Where, where I really feel as a band director, it's a really great rehearsal space, is what we mentioned last year. And I know it sort of came up, there were a couple of different things that were said about problems that were had with my original proposal, which was the parking lot behind the new wing. And I know that there were some safety concerns, but right now, we, where we're at, we have kids walking through traffic to move their instruments to the field because the way they have to take to get around the school puts them right in that parking lot anyways. So that's safety concern. I mean, I get the safety concern there, but I think it, wide enough, it works and with, and long, and lengthwise, it works. And then I know the biggest problem of that is the light posts. We talked about the light posts. And my solution would be to, I've talked with numerous band directors about this issue, trying to figure out a way to work with you guys. And some of them deal with light posts and stuff in their parking lots. You know, when you practice on a parking lot, there's maybe going to be a parking block in your way or a light post or something like that. And so at times, they say you just work around it, or if that came up, I know that the gym, the athletic department just worked with you to find a grant to have the whole gym renovated. I would like to work with the board or Jason more and personally to find a grant to maybe have that light post removed. We could find something to have that, to get the funds to remove that and have that field painted. Then that's, that would be my solution, would be to go ahead and paint the field as is with the light post and work throughout the year to find a solution for the light post, whether that's we continue, maybe we use it for a year and we find that it doesn't really affect us whatsoever, or we use it and it does affect us, and then I can work with, you know, you to find a grant to sort of have some, to work on having that removed as needed. I, you know, and I know there's a safety concern, but I know that we could put barriers up. We talked about that, having some barriers put up so people can't drive through there while we're practicing. We only practice two to three nights a week after school, so it would only be an issue those three nights of the week and Saturday. You know, Saturday mornings, we're here in the morning, but I don't know of too many other activities that are here usually as early as we are on Saturdays rehearsing. And then you can still, the, my, my thoughts on it is even though we would block that off and you couldn't drive through there, there are still adequate ways to get to all the parts of the school without driving through that one lane. You can still get to the baseball field, you can still get to the blue gym, you might just have to go in another way, but instead of driving through that parking lot. But that's my thoughts on it are, I think we, I think that is a really great rehearsal facility back there. I think it has great potential, especially, and I know there were thoughts of soccer games and what we would do for parking at soccer games. There's a whole parking lot beside it people could park in. We're done at 5:30, and I know most soccer matches don't start in probably until 6:00 or 6:30. And so we would be out of there, out of the parking lot before the matches start. Just all those little things, I, I just really, to me, that has the biggest potential at the school for a really great rehearsal space for the band.
I'm not confident the soccer matches start after that.
Most of them are five.
Oh, are they five? Oh, sorry. I might have read the schedule wrong. I thought they were six.
Because of the lighting.
Oh, because of the lighting, okay. My fault on that one. So I mean, if we had to, if it became a problem and maybe after if we used it for a year and it became a problem with the soccer team, then we could, if, you know, I don't know how many, I'd have to look and see how many matches we had that lined up with our rehearsal times and everything like that. But even if it was two matches out of the entire season lineup on a Tuesday, Thursday, or Friday night, and we have to stop 30 minutes early and go inside and work on something else and not use the field, we can be flexible. As long as, you know, we, you know, if we knew that that was an issue, we could be flexible once we knew it was an issue. You know, at the moment, we don't, I mean, I have no idea if it would be an issue or not with the soccer team. So, but if it came up, we could be flexible with our rehearsal time and be out of that area for people to work. If we knew, you know, we could plan rehearsal time accordingly, if we knew we had to be out at a certain time.
Thank you for, for that information. One of our biggest concerns there, you know, if you were to use that area without ruining the poles, obviously that takes a, a major financial burden out, out of the picture. The area, blocking it off is what would be a challenge.
Yeah.
Because really, you would have to block off that South Drive. And then you could block off in between the band room and the wrestling room.
Yeah, that, that area.
But if you block off that South Drive, you can't get cars over to the softball field, the baseball field. And you really need to block off there because, I mean, you could put barriers kind of straight across and where you could leave that open. Our concern is if there is a way to go around them, people will go around them. So that, that's something that we would want to.
Yeah, and I see that, I definitely see the concern. My biggest factor in this whole thing is the safety of the students. And other schools, I mean, other schools deal with the same thing. Most other schools in the state practice on parking lots now. It has become a big thing with marching bands. And other schools deal with, I mean, I've been in the middle of a marching band rehearsal and a car drives through the band. And this is at a, this was at a, this was at a parking lot that is not, you know, you know, supposed to be driven through during that time. Obviously, you can see the band rehearsing on that. So I've dealt with that situation before, and so I get the concern. But we still, I mean, even now where our rehearsal space is, there are tons of safety concerns as well with kids getting there because of where it's located. Anyways, right now, I, I would almost see that there are less safety concerns with having the kids go to that parking lot than where we have it now.
Where are you having it now?
Right by the, practice right there by the administration building.
Oh, you're talking about in that field?
Yeah, in the field.
Because the only place they really cross the road is at the stop sign and the, where the crosswalk is at, correct?
No, because the doors in the high school, the middles don't come out of them. So our pit equipment can't go through those doors.
So, okay.
So the only way our pit equipment can get to our field right now is they go out the side band room door, which is a double door. And they have to walk all the way around the school on the driveway, basically on the lane that people take to get out of the school at 3:00. And to make it to rehearsal on time, these kids have to leave when the bell rings. So they're moving equipment while kids are in line. Buses are moving, cars are moving. And so it's almost more, to me, we don't restart rehearsal technically until 3:15. And so I have been here, and most teachers will tell you, at 3:15, everybody is gone. Kids are out of here by 3:02, I think, if you ask most teachers. They're in line, in their cars, getting ready to leave. And so I feel like not having, having it closer to the band room, having some sort of rehearsal space closer to the band room, while there is a safety concern of people driving through there, I would hope that if you blocked off that drive completely between the new wing and the wrestling room, that you hopefully would not drive through a barricade. But I mean, I guess I can't stop somebody from driving through a barricade. Now, I get, the concern on the other side would be my main safety concern, but the way I think about it is you could, like you said, just go straight down the line. And again, I mean, I can't control, you can't control, nobody can control people driving through there. It would just be another, you know, no rehearsal space besides, you know, besides a fenced-in area that is privately back behind the school or something like that is going to be perfect, I think, at this moment. So I think it's sort of finding which one sort of fits where this program is headed the best. Instead of deciding, you know, there's pros and cons to every single rehearsal space that we're going to mention. And I think the cons of the safety, the one safety concern for the field, for the field being painted in the parking lot behind the new wing, I feel like those safety concerns are less than the ones of having kids walk through traffic at 3:00 to get to the field we're currently at. Because, and again, that is due to, I mean, I guess we, you could remedy that by having the, the middles of the doors come out and we could walk around like that. But then again, that's, you know, we can talk about as a rehearsal problem of having to walk, you know, across the whole school and everything like that.
So I think the way to move forward with this is understanding that we're not wanting to paint permanent lines over here at the elementary school.
Yeah.
And that you need to get with Jason and walk the facility, probably measure out the facility, and then you guys come up with a proposal to the board.
Perfect.
I think that is the best scenario moving forward if the other board members agree.
And I, and I want to preface everything and say that at no point did we ever feel that, we didn't, we didn't want to come in here and make you guys feel like we don't think that there's support here. Obviously, there was support. We worked towards finding a solution. It just so happened that this solution kind of sort of happened at the same time it happened last year, where it was told to us right before the season started that all of this happened. And so it's not that we don't, you know, we don't want you guys to feel like we are against the board. We want to work with the board to find a solution. And we don't, and we just want to make sure that the kids, especially in the arts programs at this school, are getting treated fairly, just like everybody else is.
I don't think that was a feeling the board heard. Just want to make sure that we are supporting all activities at Southwestern, okay? We can say equally, but we all know they're not all going to be equally. There are certain things that happen, there are certain things that come up or are brought to our attention earlier or later that, that we can fix, okay? But you got the answer about the elementary area, so let's work together to figure out what the, the plan is. And if it doesn't, if it works within our safety parameters of what we feel comfortable doing, you'll get full support of the board.
If I could, Alec, if you would get any measurements from the corner of the wrestling room to the corner of the building, the band room, and also from that fence to the soccer fence.
Okay, so I can do that.
Because I wanted to find out what kind of barricade options we have there. I would rather have something that is going to be covering the entire area going from, on that, on that south end.
I completely understand.
To try to, as best we can, limit cars from, from going in, in there.
Yeah.
And then, you know, if we can find any grant type of, of option that can help us remove those poles, those lighting posts while maintaining an appropriate amount of lighting for security purposes back there. I mean, we still need to have lighting back there, but I'll be more than happy to work with, with you guys to, to get that.
Awesome.
That done. But, so give me those measurements. I'll do some research on barricade options for that, that space. We already know about what the cost is going to be to line, to do lines.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll get into that.
Awesome, thank you.
I want to thank everybody for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your consideration and adherence.
Anything else on the proposed law issues? I would respectfully say if you don't want to stay for the rest of this, very excited for you.
Thank you so much.
Feel free to leave. That is not rooted by any means.
Thank you, guys.
Well, Jess. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, guys. Next item, consideration of minutes and executive session verification. Need a motion to approve?
One second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Consideration of treasure report. Motion to approve, please.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Next is the change in the IRS mileage that's in your packet, rate increase. I need a motion to approve.
So moved. One second.
Any discussion? Guess with gas at $5, we all agree.
Yes.
Motion to approve, please. All in favor? Aye, sorry. Next is the high school and middle school handbook. It's in your packet. We went over it last week as well. I need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Any discussion? Those in favor? Aye. Next will be the high school and middle school class fees. As stated in your packet, I need a motion to approve.
One second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Chuck, we go through these pretty fast, so if we get to you, yell out.
I'm watching. You don't have to tell Chuck when he needs to speak. We get up when he's ready. I know that for sure. Classified employee handbook. Changes are highlighted. It's in your packet. I need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
All in favor? Okay, next, I need these donations. $250 from Susan Abel for athletics and $695.12 from Chris Hill for high school girls tennis. Motion to approve.
One second.
Further discussion?
Thank you for those.
Absolutely. All in favor? All right, so bear with me on some of these names if I totally botch them. So here we go. Personnel, retirement, high school secretary Linda Manuel, resignation elementary teacher Emily Phillips, resignation cafeteria cook Diana Marshall. Employment, middle school teacher David Campbell. Is David here?
Yep.
And employment for Title AIDS, Joe Spray, Tracy Harson, Aaron Lutz, Brittany Green, Jolie Mack, Bailey Brandon, Tammy Simmons, Susan Winston, Sheila Ruder, Candace Bowley, Annabella Vivins, Maria Olivia De Perez, Cassie Rudolph. Employment for the 2023 transportation driving. Matrons and subs, please. Chuck Justice. Chuck Justice, Dora Powell, Kayla Hubbard, Jerry Locke, Rick Page, Denny Shepherd, Donna Brooks, Brian Crafton, Kevin Cowherd, Jenny Miller, Heather Carlock, Gabriella Hubbard, Walter Hubbard, Tina Hardy, Kathy Justice, Cindy Gross, Mary Arbuckle, Teresa Page, Vicky Kelly, Wanda Spurgeon, Wanda Schnebel, Jessica Barr, Rick Byrd, Kobe Cloud.
May I speak, um?
Once we go to discussion, yes. Okay, Chuck?
All right. Thank you.
Yep. Employment change, a position change of hours, preschool aide, preschool teacher Margaret Thornton from teacher aide preschool teacher, Brittany Bronner from four hours to eight hours, substitute teaching during the summer of 2023. Jennifer Smith, preschool aide, substitute teacher during the summer of 2023. Employment, 2022 fall sport coaches, Chris Johnson varsity volleyball head coach, Zach Newsbaum varsity boys cross country head coach, Stephanie Newsbaum varsity girls cross country head coach, Nancy Totten varsity girls soccer coach, Paul, oh boy. Brandon, how you say that name?
Who is it?
The Lamberins?
The Lamberins.
The Lamberins, okay, thank you.
Like I wouldn't.
And Stuart Brammer for JV girls assistant soccer. Split stipend. Seth Shields varsity boys soccer coach, Cameron Rogers JV boys assistant soccer coach, Van Green middle school soccer coach, Matt Johnson varsity girls golf coach, Jason Potte varsity, boys varsity tennis head coach.
Get a cramp?
Yeah. And it's not really the font that I really need, but that's.
Do you want?
No, we're good. Amy Hill JV volleyball head coach, stipends, summer online teaching coordinator, Tanya Joseph, stipends for 2122 PLTW middle school courses. Molly Toomey, $1,000. Sean Barnes, $500. Ryan Canada, $500. Cheryl Waterson, $1,000. Stipends for 2022 summer athletics, girls basketball, $500 each. Brian Crane, Paula Fulton, Tom Scroggins. Softball, $500 each. Paula Fulton, Tom Scroggins, Kelsey Brierley. Girls soccer, $1,500 each Nancy Totten. Boys tennis, $1,500 Jason Potte. Girls tennis, $1,500 Kenny Garrett. Boys basketball, Zach Newsbaum, $650. Phil Whelan, $425. Cam Rogers, $425. I need a motion to approve. Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
That's you, Chuck.
Look at you, Chuck.
I thought, excuse me.
That was about 10 minutes ago, but if you could figure it out.
Ow, I just don't get no respect.
A lot from me, but I just don't really want to say it publicly.
You might as well. Don't bother me. I have a letter I'd like to present to the board. There's copies here available for, I'm not sure how they's in there. This is on behalf of Jerry Locke. Dear school board members, my name is Jerry Locke, and I've been employed for a total of 29 years, eight years as a matron, 21 years as a corporation driver. I'm upset the proposal to change vocational and preschool routes from route pay to trip pay, thus cutting the pay for drivers. Previously and up to the 22, 23 school year, there was, these were considered a bus route as driven daily with the same students every day, and were given a special pay as all route, as all routes. Last year, we received deeply appreciated raises, and now vocational preschool are now being considered trips, which is paid differently at a lesser amount. $15 an hour versus 74 per day for four hours, and last year's vocational were new drivers. Preschool was paid $29 a route and will be paid $13 an hour if they have moved to special purpose buses, and 15 if it's on a large special needs bus with two-hour limit. Vocational is a route where the driver of the same students through sales and back every day, sometimes with Southwestern not in session, and preschool is a route that delivers special needs preschool home to the middle of the day, and some days when the rest of the school was not in session. Trip pay is, trip pay is field trips and extracurricular trips, and they will benefit from this change. When you work at the same job year in and year out, you should expect to better yourself and receive better pay as your dedication continues. We could transfer to schools with such a shortage of drivers nearby schools that even pay benefits and better pay. Shouldn't our dedication be worth something to you? Or would your other push us out the door? Rules have changed so much in the last few years as to when we did double routes, when the driver was absent, we received double pay. Now, we only get paid extra if we go over our two-hour time limit. Previously, if you had a special route, you kept that route until you decided to give it up, and now we can only have special route for one year and not repeat. I enjoy working for Southwestern. I was, when I went to school here, I went to school here as my children and my grandchildren have. Also plan to retire from here if I am not forced out of these changes. And Jerry asked me to read this because she couldn't be here because she's on vacation this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck.
We have, the reason that we had to pay was last year was because we were under a classified handbook requirement. As it says in the, in the handbook, every year we reevaluate the situation. One of the things that we were trying to do is to provide some consistency in how things were getting paid. The trips, what we did was the traditional AM, PM are considered routes. Anything that falls outside of those were considered to be trips under the new guidelines. They were being paid the same rate whether they were driving a special purpose bus or a school bus. So, there were some, some discrepancies in there that we were concerned about, wanted to make some adjustments to provide some consistency so that those that are getting paid, or that are a special purpose bus driver and don't have a CDL, get paid at a lesser rate than the person who's gone through all the requirements to get their CDL, they get paid a higher rate. The, there were situations where, in this case, the bouquet and the preschool, they took a loss in that. However, they were getting paid $12.70 an hour for field trip pay, and they're now getting 15 for an hour, for a field trip pay. So, they're gonna, there's gonna be some that gain, some that lose, but ultimately, the changes that were made were for the purpose of being consistent with what we were saying in the handbook last year and what changes we wanted to make being implemented this
On the savings, Laura, you feel comfortable with, with the change proposal?
I have not figured any of the money or how much difference it's going to make, to be honest with you, John. I, I haven't got to that point yet.
That's fair. You've got a few other numbers, I know you can touch you for.
A few, yeah. So, I can't answer that.
I do want to say that from the very beginning, we, we have tried to support the bus drivers, especially those who, you know, hit the, the gas crunch, right? And we were paying a lot more for gas, and the board did approve, you know, so many gallons of gas per week during the school year. And we were still paying their, their salaries throughout the situations with COVID, when they were or weren't picking up kids and taking kids. So, I think we've tried to support and understand the importance of the bus drivers at least the six or eight years I've been on the board. And we understand that a lot of that is, bus driver is the first person that student sees and the last person that student sees. So, if you guys are comfortable passing the other contracts, if we can have the board do us a report on what the changes would cost us or not cost us before we approve that, I would, I would be fine with taking.
I would agree.
The bus paycheck portion of the.
So, do we need to make a motion to table just the portion?
Yes.
The portion that at least transportation.
Correct.
Can I say some, or just ask a general question?
Sure.
Tina Hardy, I drove the bus and now I'm still doing the sub driving, but also with the, like, the extracurricular activities, I know last year, or maybe it was two years ago, there was like a particular route that I had been asked to drive, and then things changed and we started switching it up. And I know Chuck had driven like the boys basketball team for quite a while, and like, we have coaches that specifically ask for certain drivers because they're comfortable with those drivers, or they specifically want those drivers to drive their buses. And bus drivers are being told no because now we have the new system where it's like a different driver every single time. And I know as a coach also, which I drive my own bus if I do need one, but I know for like the girls basketball team, they were kind of upset about that because they had wanted me to come in whenever their bus driver stopped because of whatever incident, but they had asked me to step in since my daughter played basketball, and it just made a lot more sense, and they trusted me as their driver. And then with Chuck, you know, driving the boys basketball team for several years, the coaches were confident with him and they felt comfortable with him. And so, in situations like that, I feel like it's kind of unfair to take away a job that the, that people have kind of asked for. But I understand, like, giving everyone a, a chance to drive, like, different routes and stuff, but in situations where it's specifically asked by coaches, or you have somebody that's ran a route for several years, it's kind of, I don't know, it was kind of, I thought, bad to take that away from Chuck. With me, I mean, I just get over it, I still drove, we just took mini buses, and so I still drove. But, and I just volunteer my time, I don't ask to get paid for that. But, and I also, because we're talking about buses right now, I think it should be mandatory that all coaches are required to at least pass the mini bus thing because I think it would save a lot of heartache to hire extra bus drivers to drive mini buses or stuff like that. I think every coach should have to do the mini bus, pass the mini bus test. But that's just my two bits on the whole, you know, extracurricular bus drivers. I, I think that if a, a team specifically asks for a driver because they feel confident with them and trust them with their kids, like, that should at least be given consideration.
They just want Chuck to drive because they know they're going to get cookies from Kathy?
Probably. Yeah, I don't cook, so I don't know what it was.
She said that, Chuck, not me, I know.
I think maybe the kids just like the music a little play, I don't know.
I understand where you're coming from. We kind of had an unspoken rule when I worked at the elementary, when we looked at subs. It was, it was kind of, I don't know, rude is the right choice of words, but it was rude to request a sub because we didn't want another sub to ever feel that they couldn't adequately take over that classroom of TB. So, I see both sides, and I've heard from several bus drivers like Chuck, that they just like, you know, Lisa always drove for swim team. That was just a common thing because Lisa's kids swam, and Shelley and Lisa knew each other, and they knew all the schools where we went and stuff. So, I get that, but we also don't want to show.
Right.
Favoritism or anything like that. We want to make sure everybody has that fair chance to choose, to be put into the drawing for when their time is coming.
Exactly. And I get, I get both sides of it, and, you know, being a substitute teacher, I also, I mean, in the high school, I get called several times because I do get asked to sub certain situations, so, I mean, I see it both ways.
Make a motion to table transportation. I'll second that motion.
Any other discussion?
Thank you guys for coming and.
Yes, thank you.
Talk more about this.
Thank you.
Those in favor of all contracts read minus the transportation?
Aye.
Aye.
So, question?
Yes.
Really little about transportation, it was about the handbook.
Oh, we were on handbook?
You already approved the handbook, so do we need to make an adjustment?
That one was in the handbook and not on the?
Yeah, that, that was.
It was actually the personnel.
I think, I think we need to approve the transportation, you guys did want us to approve the transportation employment, right?
Yeah, I still want to be employed.
Because that was. So, I don't know what we need to do, but I just wanted to clarify that.
So, would it fall under?
You need to go back and redo the classified handbook.
So, when Chuck wanted to speak, and I told him, no, I shouldn't let him speak.
Chuck was, it was his fault, not yours.
So, we need to redo it. So, Misty made the motion to approve the handbook, so Misty needs to rescind that motion.
I rescind that motion.
And then Lacy seconded, so Lacy needs to second the rescinding.
I second the rescinding.
And then you need to make a new motion that you accept the classified handbook, table the transportation portion.
And I'll make that motion to accept the classified employee handbook, but table the transportation portion. And I second that.
Any other discussion?
No, you need to say it all. You have to say it all.
All three.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you for keeping me straight here. Just like a substitute teacher, you know, jumped in, tried my best and look at it.
Your kids are all.
Laura?
Yes, sir.
Budget and finance.
Okay. First item is the administrative retirement benefits resolution addition that needs to be added to it. The resolution was first signed on July 1st, 2006. It was amended in August 25th, 2008, and we need to amend it again to add assistant superintendent to that. And then there's one other line item that all listed above will receive the $50 per day of accumulated sick days. That's because it was added to the teachers, and so the administrators should have it added also. And I need a motion to approve the new changes in the resolution, please.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second that motion.
Laura?
Yes.
Real call or just?
It should be real, like, on, on the vote, please.
Any other discussion? Lacy?
Aye.
Misty?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Okay, the next, next thing is my budget calendar, and I did send you one in your board packet, and are there any dates that you feel like you're, we're not going to have a quorum? Because if there, if there is, we will, I will need to redo this and change it. That first one is the 18th, not the 25th, because that will be tonight, so.
That will be next month.
Yeah, that would be tonight.
It's too late.
I'm just, I'm just asking.
Oh, I'm August, sorry, I'm, I'm next month, sorry.
Okay.
I'm not going to be here tonight.
She's not.
I wish I stayed home, but anyway, it's okay. Rick owe me a diet.
As long as we have a quorum.
You're good, the rest of the day.
So, now, on the, tonight, I will need to have your approval to go ahead and advertise when and if I can get it ready, and I will bring. And I will bring everything back to you and let you know that, how much I'm advertising for. It will be really close to what I advertised last year. There won't be too many changes on it. So if I could have a motion to advertise.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Any other discussion? Hey, Lacy? How do you vote? Aye. There you go. Misty?
Aye.
John says aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I took care of that. Do you need another copy of it or? Okay, all right. The next thing I have is the O B O lease agreement that we do with O B O each year, letting them use our downstairs for their classes. It's the same as last year. We didn't ask them for any more money or anything. And we just need a motion to approve the agreement that was sent to you. And I'll need a motion on that. And then the signature is in the folder for you to sign, please. Motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the lease agreement. And I'll second that motion.
Okay. Roll call, Lacy?
Aye.
Misty?
Aye.
John says aye. Thank you.
Okay, that one's taken care of.
Oops, threw the rest of it on the floor.
Okay. Next, we discussed several things at our workstation, as you remember. And I don't know if you've come to any conclusions on what we need to do tonight. The air conditioning at the middle school, we have two quotes bids on that. The train supply compressors are $14,371.87 plus the installation from Mark Hord H V A C for $5,145 for a total of $19,516.87. And we really need to get that rolling if we possibly can get a motion to approve it.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Okay, thank you. The next thing on there are the gym gates. We have two, if you're ready to approve one of them. Decker equipment, six gates, was $9,239.70 with the shipping of $5,846 for a total of $9,824.30. Educational furniture had six gates, $9,570, which included the shipping. Roger wanted me to let you know that he prefers Decker equipment because of the locks system that we talked about earlier. So I will need for you to decide on what you want to do with that, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the bid for Decker equipment.
I'll second. All in favor?
Okay, thank you. The gym lights that we discussed, North Electric. Let's see, the gym lights, we had two different things and I need to know what you want to do. The, oh, first of all, I need to give you this because you asked for, you asked for a breakdown of where we are on cost. And I have that for you ready. So before I go any farther, you might want to look at that for a few minutes and then, then I'll go ahead and talk about them and see what you want to do. Because if you remember, we had several different options on the lighting. We have the lower level at $26,780 from North Electric and Miller Electric was $34,221. And then the end zones, we had North Electric at $17,200 and Miller Electric bid at $19,425. So do we even, what do we want to do and who do you want to do it?
I think North Electric needs to do it as we discussed and also make sure this covers the playing surface as well.
That's the, the lower level lighting is over the playing surface.
The $26,700.
And then the end zones is the other lighting.
It's a, with visitors and?
Yes. For student sections.
Because you've already gotten the lighting for the bleachers and whatever.
Yes.
We originally approved the ones for the bleachers because they had to be changed for height, right?
Yes, that was the, the second floor lighting, as you can see on this.
And then the concern was that lighting would be a lot different than the end zone and the playing surface lights, correct?
Correct. That's the way I understood it.
That we have the money to do it, so.
Yes, we did.
North Electric needs to be, in my opinion, my, my motion is that North Electric do the complete lights for the lower level and end zones as well.
You made the motion for that, for both of, both of those, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Those in favor?
And the last thing that we needed to talk about was the elevator. And I didn't know if you were ready to talk about it, but Jeff has some more information on what you'd ask us to get for you.
Thank you.
So we did have the chair lift guy come today. This is the, what the lift would look like. So it's a combo of a seat and also you could put a wheelchair on it. And that would go on the, one of the stairwells on the girl end of the gym, on the north stairwell.
Then that would pretty much take out the whole entire. Would they be bullet?
Does it go in the one by the locker room?
Yeah, it would go closest to the locker.
It's wide.
It's wider.
It's wider than the. And it would, it would meet the, whatever codes needed. And the total for that is $84,328.
So it's more than that other one?
It's more than the elevator that we talked about.
In the wrong business.
How soon do we need to move on that, Laura? I just, I asked because Rick.
I don't know how close are we to getting ready to order an elevator and everything? I don't know where we are at the gym.
Well, I think, I think with the way that everything is, the longer we wait, the less chance we have of being able to use the upstairs in the gym kind of sports season because they won't be able to install them at all.
Plus of getting it in, you know, how the shipments are.
So I think, you know, I would prefer that we make a decision tonight and get somebody on the docket so we get on their calendar so they get it taken care of.
Post sports, we have volleyball rifle?
That, that price is also, does not include electric. So that's on top of that. And here's the bid that we looked at before that includes everything.
64, right?
Yes.
My recommendation will be to do the North Electric lift at the 64.
That includes the getting the paperwork done for it. And Roger said it took care of everything. The electric goes, the whole works. We were supposed to owe nothing more with this one, but we owe a lot more with that one.
That's the only reason we would do it.
Okay.
And it wasn't, right?
We weren't sharing the nature where we got it.
Laura, thanks for your work on the quotes.
Sure.
I recommend that we approve North Electric for the lift in the gym to be compliant.
Or for the elevator, not the lift?
Elevator, yes.
Okay.
That moves very slow.
Is Don't be in a hurry if wants me to?
Get there before the first quarter.
Do you have a question?
The question was the chair for the gym. Are you talking about a elevator elevator like we have? Or are we talking about lift chairs in both cases?
We're talking about an elevator that we can't really call an elevator because if you call it an elevator, it would require a shaft and an architect and all that good stuff, which puts us up to, what, $300, $500,000? It's crazy. They're calling this one a lift, but it still works. It's like a hydraulic lift, but it works more like an elevator where the one that Jeff got today was like a chair lift that slides up a wall. So that's, that's the two that we're looking at now.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
We thought the chair would be a cost-effective way to get us compliant. It obviously was not.
Yeah, it came back higher than the other one.
So we're gonna go with.
The lift.
The lift.
That would be.
Which gets us compliant and when it's used two times all year, we'll be compliant those two times we use it.
Because it's not gonna be open during the school season. It's like Laura.
If a student needs to use it?
Yes, be available if a student needs to get upstairs.
Or staff.
Or staff, yeah. But when you put in new bleachers, you have to be compliant. That's what we are.
So did you make a motion to approve that?
I did.
I will second that motion.
Great. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye, thank you, Laura.
Laura, thank you for your work on this.
Tell Roger if I'll come through. I will. Thank you. I'm finished, John. Back to you.
At least for the night.
Anyone else in the audience have anything they'd like to discuss?
Hey, John, Josie? Yeah, can I say something, actually? There's something I want to discuss and I've discussed it with other boards as well. So for those that don't know, I'm an I H S A official. I've been one for, you know, one of my 12th, my 12th seasons, so too long. And one thing I wanted to address, and Sue's an official as well, and Josie, you've obviously been coaching forever, so you know this, but we are having a severe shortage of officials right now. A really, really bad, severe shortage of officials. And a few things I want to address. One, obviously, I know you all can only do so much. And maybe Mr. Bates, obviously, you're here full time, all the time. We need to make sure we control audiences, like crowds, because in the sense of their behavior toward officials. Because I have a younger brother who's the soccer coach now at Shaw. He's going on his second year. He was thinking about getting into officiating because he saw how much fun I was having, and I still do at times. But he came to one game with me at Madison and Madison's coach, well, called me everything but what a saber would say. And he, after watching me, he walked, we walked to my car and he said, I can't do it. He said, I can't put up with that. So what I'm asking the board is two things. And I'm gonna say it to Madison's board and I've already said it to Madison's board. I'm gonna say it to Shaw's board in August. What I'm asking is, please try to control the audience. Please try to control coaches and say this, because guess what? If we run out of officials, these games end. These kids can't participate. Soccer, we are gonna get to a point where we are gonna have two-man crews. Take it from a soccer official, two-man crews are not fun. It is awful. It is hard to keep up. And if that gets to that case where we're gonna do two-man crew, I'll just go back to college full-time and I'll give up high school because I can't do a two-man all the time. But that's where we're getting to that point because we're getting less and less officials. Because kids in high school, they're seeing the way parents act. They're seeing the way coaches act and players, for the record, anyone that's been a coach here knows, players act how their coaches act. And what I'm asking, please, is control everyone and also encourage people to give back and get into officiating. I went to school at Hanover College, graduated in 2014, had four amazing years there. And when I was there, I officiated high school soccer every single year. Had a blast. I had no issue with it. It was a fun job. But as I'm getting older, I'm seeing less and less young people. I'm 31 now and I'm the youngest referee in this area and it's not even remotely close. And the next youngest official's in his 60s, for goodness sake. And I mean, we're getting, we're getting to that point. Folks, we can't do that anymore. So I'm asking, please, A, encourage kids, because you know what? Not every kid's gonna be a college athlete as much as their parents think they're gonna be. And I've watched a lot of college athletics. Thank you, Josie, for that. And we are getting to a point where kids think they're gonna play college, but they're not. So this is a way, if they want to stay involved with athletics, they can do that while they're in college. They can get into officiating, whether it's soccer. Baseball's the other sport that we are really, really short on. Softball's getting that way. Volleyball, I think we're all right. Sue, maybe you could speak more to what sports we really need. But soccer and baseball are the two that we are running out of. And they've had to cancel, and what's that?
Track.
Tracker field? We've had, and I know this, the I H S A shared an Indianapolis Star report. We are, they canceled, I think this year, over 100 baseball games because they didn't have umpires. I mean, that is completely unacceptable. And we must, must control our behavior because I enjoy it. I have fairly thick skin. I don't care. I'll just throw you out. I just, I really don't care. But some people, they're not gonna be able to take getting cussed at every game, getting spat on by people when they're walking to their car, like it's happened to me. Or getting cussed at while I'm walking to my car. Having a player come onto the field and come after me at South Ripley three years ago. That can't happen. That's unacceptable. Now, I've never really had the issues here. This place has always been great. I love officiating here and I love working for Mr. Scroggins and the school. But I'm asking everyone here at the board, please, remind everyone that we are human beings and without us, they're not gonna be able to play games. And in addition to that, please, if anyone is interested, please encourage them to get into officiating because we really are desperate. Because there will come to a point where I'm done. So I'm asking you all, please encourage kids to do it because it is a great way to make money. Schools pay extremely well per game, but also control crowds. Make it a zero tolerance. Make it to where if someone gets thrown out of a game, make them not come back for a while. Make them will have to learn. Because the more this happens, the less officials are gonna be like, you know what? We really don't need this.
Worth the money.
Yeah, yeah, it's no, it's, yeah, it's not worth the money at all for some people. I mean, I just enjoy it. I just enjoy officiating. But I ask that and I appreciate the board's time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I need to finish that.
Thanks. Anyone else? Superintendent's report?
Oh, I got sort of right. Paul Morgan, and I sub year throughout the last four years, for five years. But the other part is, I know I saw in the paper where we're talking about security. I'd kind of like to super update you on what we have done for this next year because of the stuff happening in schools. I'd just like to get a little report of what's being changed.
I can do that, sure. The biggest thing has been ongoing over the past two years. We are getting all of our facilities rekeyed. Unfortunately, there have been, over the years, a lot of keys have been given out to various folks that we never got back. So the biggest thing in school safety is controlling access. And then that's, that's the biggest thing that we're working on right now. In fact, today, the Schiller Hardware, we're here today working on, on the project. But every, every opening, every door gets a new key. We're implementing electronic locks on all classroom doors. One of the things that benefits from, from that is that teachers do not have to go out into the hallway to secure their door like they, they used to have to because it was a key thing. And also, if, when we do have staff that leave us, they have cards instead of physical keys. So we can easily shut those off immediately and not have to worry about getting those, those keys back. Very, very, very few master keys are being given out. Even less building level keys. So pretty much everybody will be accessing the buildings through a key card and that has a record of what time they entered. We are also in the process of implementing a completely new video surveillance system. As you might imagine, since we just got the approval for the loan this, this spring, we have to work through the process of getting that done. But we are engaging with some vendors right now to try to figure out how many cameras we need, how much storage we need, those types of things. And doing a lot more with IP cameras, which is what we're getting. You can do a lot more of preventative things because of digital analytics. So if you have specific areas, for example, the pool, if nobody's supposed to be in the pool over six hours, you know, 12:00 P M. to 6:00 A M., you can set parameters so that if someone is found in that area, it can automatically notify law enforcement. It can automatically notify school staff. Lot more of proactive things can be done as opposed to just reactive. Where right now, with the systems that we have, we're only able to kind of go back and look at who was in there, which, you know, we've had to do. able to kind of go back and look at who was in there, which, you know, we've had to do and we've had some success with that. But those are, access control is the primary thing that is going to help us, but the, no matter how many locks and keys you have, doesn't really solve the problem when you have people that aren't propping doors open and leaving doors open. That's a human issue and so, you know, we can, we can try to get everybody to understand that when you prop that door open for convenience purpose, that leaves an opportunity for someone to get in and do something that we don't want to have happen. So, while we are taking efforts to secure the buildings, it's, it's a community effort. We are going to be inconvenienced slightly. You know, we're going to have to go to a door that has a key card reader as opposed to getting, having a physical key to get us in any door in the building. So, there are some minor inconveniences, but overall, it will make a safer environment. There's no way that if somebody wants to do something bad, they're going to do it, they're going to find a way. All we can do is make that process harder.
I agree with you. I just think I'm kind of out of the direction we're moving and I know you were, I knew you were working on it very seriously and I appreciate that.
Thanks, Paul.
Superintendent's report.
So, you have in your packet a resignation from a high school teacher that came in late last week, that came in after the board packet was already put together, and that's Mike Kelly. And then also, we have a resignation here from Don Peralta's, our French and Spanish teacher. So, I need a motion to approve both of these resignations.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any other discussion?
I don't think so, other than schools right around here and we're, we're going to be ready. The buildings are custodial, people have done a fantastic job this summer getting the buildings ready, I don't think I've ever seen them look better than they look right now to start a school, so. We'll hit the ground.
Yes, sorry. Those in favor?
Aye, aye, thank you.
And a letter did go out to teachers, they should have got it, I think on Friday or Saturday, so, it's right around the corner.
Ready or not, here they come.
I'm ready.
I like that, see, they're coming, whether you're going to be waiting.
That's right.
Dates on the calendar.
That is.
Any more comments, questions?
Mr. G retiring or resigning, does that mean we're not going to be offer French this year?
That position was posted either today or will be tomorrow and then we have, if we don't find a teacher, we have a contingency plan to be able to still offer French.
Okay, okay.
Will Mr. Bryant just absorb the other thing?
That's Sue, she can do it.
There's a, there are a cabinet, there's a plan for the Spanish part of it, so.
So, check your calendars, future meeting dates, Monday, August 29th and Monday, September 26th. I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
All in favor? Thank you. Thanks for your patience, everyone.